We'll call this meeting to order, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, July fifteenth. Roberta, would you please do the roll call?
Supervisor Long, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Flynn, and Supervisor Foy.
Here. We have two of our supervisors out. Supervisor Long in Sacramento, meeting with Receiver Councilman Aldous Strickland regards to the prison, mental prison in Camarillo. And also, we have Supervisor Flynn, who has a meeting in Sacramento in regards to the sewers. So they won't be with us today. Now, we have a moment of affirmation from Pastor Jim Duran. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning. I wanted to read a text out of Luke nine, nine twelve. And it says this, "Now, the day was ending, and the twelfth came and said to him, 'Send the crowd away, and they may go into the surrounding villages and countryside and find lodging and get something to eat; for here we are in a desolate place.' But he said to them, 'You give them something to eat.' And they said, 'We have no more than five loaves and two fish, unless perhaps we go and buy some food for these people; for they were about five thousand men.' And he said to his disciples, 'Have them sit down to eat in groups of about fifty each.' They did so, and had them all sit down. Then he took the five loaves and the two fish, and looking up to heaven, he blessed them, and broke them, and kept giving them to his disciples to set before the people. And they all ate, and were satisfied; and the broken pieces which they had left over were picked up, twelve baskets full.'" So I wrote some notes down that talked about this huge crowd of five thousand, and that was just the men, and it wasn't including the women and children. Jesus had them. They were in an isolated spot, far away from food and drink. And it was getting late, and the crowds were getting tired, and the disciples said we needed to feed them, but they wanted to send them away because they didn't have the food. And Jesus told them for them to feed them. And after their jaws got picked up from the ground, they protested. And it never occurred to them that maybe Jesus could have done it. And the reason I bring this up is because He had already performed so many different miracles, from healing a crippled man, curing a blind man, raising a dead girl to life, also turned water into wine. And, you know, the question always comes up in our lives. As I was writing some notes down, we always think things are just a little bit too difficult for God to fix. And I just want to bring this to you today, that nothing is too difficult for our Lord. And at the same time, we're so interested in all of our smallest little minute details. In Psalms, it tells us that He keeps track of all my sorrows, and have collected all my tears in a bottle, that He has recorded each one in His book. And so even though the huge things in our lives seem so big, He's still looking at the small things in our lives. And there's an important spiritual principle here that says God, He doesn't need us to participate in His work, but He would like us to. Since He is God, and He's created everything, He really doesn't need us to do anything, but He would really love to partner with us. God can do little. He can do a lot with a little. And God used a young boy with a slingshot to knock out Eliath. He used a poverty-stricken woman to sustain Elijah. He used a young girl to lead a leprous, Naaman, to Elijah. He used a donkey to speak truth. He used a donkey-bowing to kill thousands. And I share this with you because there was another example of a little boy who He used, who only had five barley loaves and two fish. And he didn't have much, but the little boy gave all he had. And God used that little bit to feed thousands of people. And I just want to share with you that He's given all of us amazing gifts. And if we give Him all we've got, it's amazing what You can do. And you are all in such great positions, not just like the little boy to give the fish, but you've been blessed with so many different gifts, all of us have. And if we give those back to Him, He could multiply them, and He can grow His kingdom with those gifts. So I just want to pray with you now, if that's okay. Dear God, I just want to lift up every supervisor that's here, Lord. Everybody that's in this room, I lift up to you. I ask for wisdom, Lord, for the important decisions that they all make on a daily basis, that we all make on a daily basis. Lord, I ask for wisdom for the decisions that we make, not only for our county, but for the decisions we make in our own households. I ask for protection, not just my position, but in the position of these supervisors. Protect their families and their homes. Lord, I ask that we can all give You back the gifts that You blessed us with in order to grow Your kingdom, and to be aligned with Your agenda. Lord, nothing is too big for You, and I pray that we have faith to believe that. Even when things seem difficult for us, they are never too difficult for You. I ask Your blessing on all of us this day, that we would honor You in everything that we do. And I ask this in Your Son's almighty, all-powerful, and precious name. Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. We'll do our pledge allegiance. Roberta, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll go ahead and move the minutes of March eleventh, special meeting, and ask for continuing in the March eighteenth to July twenty-second.
We have motion in a second. Okay. Then we'll move to our agenda review.
Yes, Chair Foy. On item twenty-six, contracts were inadvertently not printed in the agenda books. They were put online, however, and I believe they've been provided to you at this point in time. Item twenty-eight, there's revised Exhibit One, page two, which removes the word "effective" from the final line. And Exhibit Two, page two, removes the word "effective" from the final line. So those are the two changes.
That's it. Anything else anybody has, except the agenda as stated now?
Go ahead and move the agenda as revised.
Second. Okay. Then we have our consent agenda, which is ten through sixteen. Any comments or changes anybody have on this?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
We will move to public comments. Okay. We have a few cards here. John Hilderson.
Chair Foy, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Bennett, CEO Robinson, honored guests. If I gave you four dollars for every dollar you gave me, would you say that's a good deal? Well, my name is John Hilderson. I teach business and communication at Cal State University, Chana Lively in Camarillo, and at Cal State Northridge. I'm here representing the Alliance for the CSU, which is a bipartisan group sponsored by the Chancellor's Office and by the California Faculty Association. Recent research has shown that for every one dollar that's budgeted for the CSU, four dollars goes back into the California economy. Unfortunately, current proposals in Sacramento aim to cut the CSU budget by approximately $225 million. The CSU budget is already down a half a billion dollars from its 2000 level, and I've been teaching the CSU system since 1990. In addition, the proposals are to raise student fees by 10%. This would, in essence, more than double student fees in the past six years. As many of you know, there are many CSU graduates in Ventura County, probably some who work in the county office. They're very good people. However, this would severely limit our growth at Chana Lively, as well as the loss of jobs and the loss of students enrolling in the CSU. Projections are up to 20,000 students that could not be enrolled in the CSU due to the increase in the tuition. I have students who are already working two jobs, students who would not be able to return to the CSU. I know students who would have to postpone graduation. CSUCI is the only four-year public university in the county of Ventura, and we're very proud of that. We're very proud of what the Board of Supervisors has done to support us. And what I'm asking is that you consider a resolution in support of the Alliance for the CSU, again, it's bipartisan, to stop the budget cuts or minimize their impact, see if we can't find a better way to fund quality education in the state of California. I've left you buttons. What good is a movement without buttons? And cards to support the CSU. Let Ventura County's voices be heard in the halls of Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Jack Cress.
Good morning. My name is Jack Cress. I live in Salmas on Old Balcom Canyon Road. I live directly across the street from one of these outdoor wedding venues. And I think you've all heard an awful lot about the noise and the traffic problems. But one of the things you haven't heard is how long the total event package goes on. I'll give you one night. Eleven-thirty at night, I have two diesel trucks pull up across the street from my house, sit there idling for about five minutes, and then proceed onto the property, where for over the next three hours, they continue to load the trucks. And it's not a quiet loading. They're throwing tables and chairs into trucks, cases with dinnerware and china ware. Went on to two forty-three in Sunday morning. I just thought I'd like to bring that to the supervisors' attention when they're considering approving these permits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Robert Clop.
Thank you. I would like to address three issues this morning that concern the proposed Ventura County Prison Hospital that would be located near Camarillo. These include the impact of the site on local medical services, the infrastructural burden to the local area, and the resulting population increase to the area. I have heard that the proposed prison hospital would house 1,500 Level III and IV offenders who are chronically or mentally ill. These are the most violent offenders in the prison system. This would require at least 1,500 or more employees, which is by far larger than anything we have currently in Ventura County. To give you an idea of the size of this proposed facility, St. John's Hospital in Oxnard has 264 beds. In order to provide doctors, nurses, and other medical technicians, the facility would most likely draw personnel from the local medical staff, since the receiver is increasing the salaries for state medical personnel, so much that local hospitals are finding it hard to compete. The loss of this staff would surely impact the availability of medical services to residents of Ventura County. There is already a nursing shortage in Ventura County, and the proposed prison hospital would only exacerbate the ability of local hospitals in the area to cover their medical personnel needs. Furthermore, there is a documented fault that runs through the existing CYA site. Hence, in the event of a large earthquake, the question arises about the evacuation of prisoners by all emergency personnel staff, thereby leaving the residents of Ventura County unprotected. As a side note, the personnel shortage also applies to law enforcement. The proposed prison hospital would require officers at a higher pay scale than locally paid law enforcement in Ventura County. This would leave local law enforcement agencies short of personnel, which would be hard to fill due to the high cost of living in Ventura County. The next area I would like to discuss is the infrastructural burden to Camarillo, Oxnard, and Ventura County for the provision of roads, water, and sewage. As I mentioned before, the facility is being planned to house 1,500 Level III and IV offenders, plus a staff of two to three times that amount to operate and manage. This is an enormous project that will overwhelm existing county, city, and state services. In addition to the inmates and staff, there will be a delivery of products and services on a daily basis, and the families of the inmates that will be visiting. Nearby roads will not be able to handle the amount of traffic without substantial improvements. Central Avenue, Wright Road, Highway 118, and Santa Clara Avenue have already heavily trafficked, and the Central Avenue interchange with 101 is in need of improvement, of course. I understand that the city of Camarillo currently provides water to the youth correctional facility and is constrained on the amount of additional water that it can pump from the Fox Canyon Aquifer. Also, the city is facing allocations on water it now needs to purchase from the Metropolitan Water District. Hence, any additional demand by the proposed prison hospital will be difficult to supply. Currently, the 50-year-old sewer system at the youth authority is serviced by the city of Oxnard Sewage Treatment Facility. I understand that the facility more than likely could not service the proposed project without substantial and costly expansion and upgrades. The final area that I would like to briefly mention involves the increase in population of our community that will result due to the sudden immigration of family members of the 1,500 inmates. This will create a housing shortage, school class size increase, and impact other infrastructure. In closing, since this is a county-wide issue, I would like to reaffirm on behalf of all concerned citizens and residents who are opposed to this project, that this board assists us in our opposition and pursue any legal avenue available to stop this project. Thank you so much for letting me address you this morning.
Thank you, sir. Mark Spicelli.
Mr. Clop's done a very good job of expressing a lot of things I have in my notes today. I'll try not to be, a lot of it's going to be redundant, but I suited up today, so. My name is Mark Spicelli. I'm a retired corporate executive, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. I've lived in Ventura County for five years now and enjoyed every minute of it up until recently, of course. My wife Lisa's an educator, and she teaches sixth grade at Ventura County Grade School. And we've both, of course, been good solid taxpaying citizens of the state of California our entire working lives. In my case, about 50 years. Anyway, I'm here as a private citizen to express my very strong opposition to the proposed destruction of the CYA Ventura Youth Correctional Facility on Wright Road in Camarillo, and the construction of the 1,500-bed prison hospital facility. I've heard it referred to a lot as a mental hospital. I don't believe that's exactly the case. I believe part of it will be from mental patients, but I believe a large, perhaps one or the other. Am I correct? Fifty-fifty, so just to make sure. There will be 50% mental patients, 50% Level III and IV high-risk offenders. But anyway, so I'm going to pile on and voice my equally strong opposition to the plan that Receiver Kelso has in place at this time. I'm a registered voter, but my party affiliation doesn't really matter because this is a bipartisan issue affecting the entire community, and we quickly gained a lot of support from, if you will, from politicians and local community leaders on both sides of the aisle, and we appreciate that very much. In the past several weeks, I have reviewed every single available shred of information available online, in the press, and in the public record, and I have come to the absolute conclusion that such a facility should have been built on the proposed site will have significant and far-reaching negative impacts on Ventura County and its citizens. I was also very disappointed to learn that it was, in fact, the lack of execution by the state government that has resulted in the federal receiver taking control of this project. The receiver has selected an inappropriate site, and that caused me great distress. A partial list of problems such a facility would create or amplify will include, and you've heard these before, and you heard them last week, and you'll probably hear them again, lots of medical staff in the county already strapped for nurses and doctors. Also, county veterans' clinics, which are manned and managed privately in the county, at least the ones I've been into, are overwhelmed as is, and will undoubtedly lose physicians just as quickly as any of the other hospitals and clinics in the area. Further denigrating the quality of health care for our veterans is outrageous to me. The infrastructural burden of Camarillo, Oxnard, and the county for provision of sewage, water, and relatively huge and ridiculously expensive, and others have touched on that before. The population increase, again, being redundant due to prison staff arrival of prisoner families, the high percentage of prisoners when they are released that will settle in the community, will create a housing shortage, and most likely an affordable housing, I'm guessing, I can't be sure, which could be a big problem, and, of course, negatively impact local schools by increasing classroom size and overcrowding. Destroying the Ventura County Youth Facility Services and the community volunteer programs available to the at-risk youth that's currently provided would be a shame. I've been told and read that several millions of dollars have been spent already and recently in improving that facility, which are raising to start over again and go through all the hassle it's going to take to relocate these young people. It's just a big mistake to make. We're certainly going to compromise the security of all the residents in the entire community, and, of course, mostly in the neighborhoods directly adjacent to the site. No amount of economic windfall, in my opinion, no amount of economic windfall is worth reducing the quality of life, security, and services that law-abiding taxpayers and voters are entitled to. Can a price be placed on the quality of life in Ventura County? I don't think so. Expected economic impacts to this project are exaggerated and will be greatly offset by reduced property tax revenues caused by further declines in residential property values in the area.
That's all the time we have. Time is up.
I say, oh, I thank you for your time and appreciate your support. And I'm going to thank you in advance for being the champions I know you can be in this issue.
Thank you. Linda Perez.
Good morning. My name is Linda Perez. I live in the city of Oxnard, and I'm here to speak again about how that medical facility, prison medical facility, is going to affect the citizens of Oxnard. One of the things I'm going to touch on is, of course, things that have already been said. But I have no paperwork here, because what I'm going to touch on is what's really going to happen. Right now, in our hospitals, we have a shortage of doctors and nurses. And if anybody here has had to take a loved one, your family, your mother, your father, your kids, to the emergency room, you sat there for two hours, three hours, and it wasn't because the doctors and the nurses are back there having lunch. It's because we have none, and they are doing the best that they can with what they've got. Now imagine this, we don't even have them because they are at that medical facility. What will we do then? I don't want to be considered the city that is the tail wagging the dog. This is the time, the time is now, that we need to all come together and get on board with this. This is not the right place for a Level III, IV medical prison, and that is exactly what it is. Now, when we talk about the type of mental patients that are going to be out there, they are still Level IIs and Level IVs, and I don't know any other way to explain what that would be like other than, let's say, Manson. He's mentally ill. Let's say Richard Ramirez, he's mentally ill. Those are Level III and Level IVs. So make no mistake that these people are only going to be in wheelchairs or bedridden. There is a high school down the road, two miles, 2.6 miles, I believe, down the road. Up the road is an elementary school, kindergarten to the eighth grade, 1.6 miles. That prison is going to have gun towers. Why is that? To keep them in. Is there a possibility that they might get out? Yes, there always is. Is there, should we put our youth at risk for something like that? I don't think so. Should we put our seniors at risk of not having medical care? I don't think so. But I do appreciate the time to come here and express my opinion, and I think so, that you guys will be on board with this, because you're looking out for all of us, not just a few. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mike Osborne.
I'm Mike Osborne, Chairman of the Ventura County Republican Party. Several days after the November 2006 elections, we were contacted by Deputy County Clerk Virginia Bloom, and informed that she believed that as a result of the actions we took in support of Peter Foy's election, we were in violation of the county's campaign finance ordinance. I then personally went to the Upton's office to clarify the matter. I informed Ms. Bloom and Jean Browning that we were in full compliance with both state and county laws, and that the county ordinance did not apply to member communications. Member communications are specific campaign actions provided for in state law and exempt from local ordinances. At that time, I also supplied Ms. Bloom and Mr. Browning with the relevant statutes, regulations, and what the other letters they needed to support our contentions. They accepted the package and told me they would research it and get back to me. A week passed, and when I didn't hear from the clerk's office, I went there in person. I spoke to both Ms. Bloom and Mr. Browning. They informed me that they were going to file a complaint with the County Ethics Commission. When I asked why they would do a thing, such a thing when the law was so clear, Ms. Bloom replied, "We don't understand this." And when we don't understand something, we go ahead and make the complaint. That started a process that I want to address today. When the clerk's office files a complaint with the Ethics Commission for a violation of the county campaign ordinance, it's also required to file a duplicate complaint with the District Attorney's Office. This creates a parallel process and two concurrent investigations. The District Attorney came to the conclusion that there had been no violation within 30 days of receiving the complaint. The Ethics Commission and their contract attorney took eight months. The process required five appearances, an in-person conference with me, my treasurer, our attorney, and no less than six county employees, county staff, including the Deputy County Executive Officer, the clerk of the board, several county councils, the contract attorney, numerous letters, and other communications. This in and of itself seems burdensome and oppressive. When you couple it with the possibility of being assessed a fine in excess of $100,000, it becomes oppressive. All of this is even more unbelievable when you find that early on, at the conference we had, the county contract attorney admitted in a session that was recorded and is available that he did not have any evidence, any allegation, or even a suggestion that the issues and questions were not member communications, and therefore would be exempt from the ordinance. The contract attorney spent eight months and over $27,000. The contract attorney spent eight months and over $27,000 of the citizen's tax money to come to the same conclusion that the district attorney came to seven months before. All that without a single new piece of information. The recommendations to dismiss was done with the exact information that I had supplied the clerk's office with eight months earlier. This becomes especially maddening considering the actions of the contract attorney when the investigation began to grind to a halt. The last action prior to the recommendation to dismiss by the contract attorney was to recommend that the commission amended the complaint to include a mechanical deficiency, a missing date, and page number on our disclosure statements. I informed the commission that these were problems with the state's own print engine, web-based print engine. The Secretary of State's office was aware of it and accepted these deficiencies. I also informed the commission that the county did not have any jurisdiction or audit capability, that only the Fair Political Practices Commission could enforce the state elections code. The ethics commission chose to amend the complaint, and the process was continued for another month. When, at the end of that hearing, I informed Judge Peck that this was a waste of our money and time and a tremendous waste of the taxpayers' money, his response to me was, "You wouldn't believe the money we've wasted." This comment was witnessed by Supervisor Foye, standing next to me when it happened. For the process that concluded, Ventura County Republican Party was, it cost the Ventura County Republican Party an excess of $10,000. We felt sure of the board, were advised of the facts, would do the right thing, and reimburse this for the frivolous action taken by the ethics commission. This appears not to be the case. When we asked about a meeting with the board to seek reimbursement, we were told to first file a government claim form 900. We did this. We were then informed that the claim was rejected by the board, there's a copy attached to my comments, on October 12th. Imagine my surprise to find out that the board had never addressed the issue, but that the staff had made the decision. The letter came with a warning and a threat. It appeared to be an attempted intimidation, I'll leave that for others to interpret. It then became evident the only way we were going to get our issue placed on the board agenda was to actually file suit, which we did. We expected it then come before the board and to be treated fairly. This was not what happened. To date, the actions of the lawyers have made it clear to us that they intend to exploit every loophole and legal tactic in order to make this action more expensive than it's worth. It appears that right and fair are not issues for risk management. In fact, we were told that the defensive tactics by the county have nothing to do with fairness but are, in fact, used to ensure that some precedent is established that might encourage others who are wronged to seek costs associated with proving themselves innocent. The Ventura County Republican Party has always tried to conduct itself with integrity, with the highest regard for the law, and to treat all we encounter with fairness and respect, and we expect no less from our leaders. Supervisor Bennett was unfairly attacked. The Ventura County Republican Party came to his defense, even though it might have been politically opportunistic to do otherwise. It was the right thing to do. Today, I asked this board to do the right thing. The Ventura County Republican Party was to force to defend itself against a frivolous complaint without cause and at great expense. I'm asking the board to meet with us and see if we can come to a fair and equitable resolution of the issue. I would like to think that our leaders are dedicated to the right, fair treatment of citizens regardless of cost. This concludes my prepared comments, but I would like to say that at every juncture, we were the wronged party, from Ms. Bloom and Mr. Browning's inability to understand the laws they are charged with enforcing, to the ethics commission's procedure, which this board found to be flawed and then corrected after hour after hour counter with them, to the contract attorney, who at every juncture appeared to favor billable hours over what was the proper thing to do for the citizens of the county. I'd like to sit down and see if we can work out something, or will you come to an equitable resolution of the issue? Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Supervisor Bennett, would you like to go?
Sure. Thank you. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and that's three of them I'd like to call out real quickly. Gary D. Morris served in the U.S. Army Reserves, he taught at Cabrillo Junior High School, he helped open De Enza Junior High, and he coached football at Ventura and Buena High Schools, been a longtime member of the community that's served our youth very well. Another, Robert Ryder, taught at Ventura High School, and then Joe McAllister, personal friend up in Ojai, served in the U.S. Army during World War II, served as a member of the Ojai Planning Commission, charter member of the Ojai Rotary West, and was a volunteer at help of Ojai. And he, those three and the other people on this list, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of, number one. Number two, I'd just like to make a brief comment about what Mr. Osborne was referencing, and I think that there's no question we have a real strong interest in modifying our campaign ordinance when we get to it this fall after this election cycle is over with, and that's certainly, that whole issue of the campaign ethics commission and how it does its business will certainly be a major part of what I think we'll be focused on. So I appreciate him pointing those errors out to us again today, or those issues, I shouldn't say errors, those issues out to us again today. Also like to thank Ron Van Dyke and the Park Department. There were two shootings in Saticoy, and the Saticoy Boys and Girls Club wanted to, on urgency, move into our community center from their side because they thought it would be safer, and within three days, Mr. Van Dyke and the Parks Department was able to facilitate that move as a temporary move here for the summer until they could get things under control, and the community and the club staff really appreciate it. The other thing I'd just like to do as we receive, to just wanna make public notice of some information we received from our healthcare agency, and that's about our ACE healthcare update, and so far, our outreach efforts have enrolled 7,400 people in the ACE program, and that's 7,400 people who didn't have any regular healthcare, who now have access to regular healthcare through the grant that was given to the county by the state for this three-year experiment, and there's just a whole lot of people that are gonna benefit tremendously from that. Give you, I gave you the one statistic, 7,400 people enrolled, almost 1,500 people from Ventura, almost 3,000 people from Oxnard, 2,000 people enrolled from the Magnolia Family Health Clinic alone. These are really significant numbers, and then, besides those people benefiting, how does everybody else benefit? Let me point out these things. 929 of these people, when they were screened as they came in, had diabetes, and if they hadn't, if they, because they got screened, they're gonna be able to take care of that, we will not have those people showing up in the emergency room with serious issues like heart failure, issues where they're gonna lose limbs, and all the other complications, which is much more expensive for us. This one's probably the most significant, hepatitis C. 1,000 of those 7,000 people screened ended up having hepatitis C. It's the best thing in the world for all of us is to get those 1,000 people in and start getting those people treated. So there are times when your investment of dollars pays off tremendously in savings down the road, and this is certainly one of the great examples where that is, in fact, the case. 57% of those people in their screening interview reported that in the past 12 months, they had needed to see a physician and did not because they didn't have any ability to pay for that physician. And again, a significant increase, 27% of those people had visited the ER room in the last 12 months. That's much higher than the average population. So again, all of these statistics are really good news, and I just wanna congratulate HCA and the staff and this Board of Supervisors for supporting a program that's really building probably the finest healthcare safety net in the state of California, and everybody in the county of Ventura benefits as a result of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Park?
Thank you. I'd also like to start with asking that the board close in honor of the people on my list, and then wanted to point out, as Supervisor Bennett did, that I am looking forward to to see that we are able to relook at how the ethics commission process works, and I think we can streamline that and avoid some of the difficulties. And we agreed when we adopted the commission that this was kind of a fluid work in progress. I think we've learned some from it, and I do look forward to seeing that streamlined and become less costly of a process, too. And then also to the folks here on the proposed prison hospital here in Camarillo, I think we're well-served on the board with Kathy Long, right now in Sacramento, fighting for you. I know Adra Strickland's office has, I don't know if the whole board signed, but we are signed on on a letter also to the governor expressing our opinion on this, too. So we're there for you, and hopefully, and from what I hear, too, we're making the biggest ruckus, so that's good, and I wish you the best. Yes, and then finally, I wanted to point out, in the City of Thousand Oaks, there was an initiative done by residents, primarily residents in mobile home parks, and I was able to join them collecting signatures and actually got thrown out from collecting signatures in front of the post office, which I found out is actually private property. But at any rate, it was very nice that it qualified for the ballot. The City of Thousand Oaks actually adopted it into law at their last meeting, and what it does is it helps to reimburse residents who live in mobile home parks if they're going to have to get out because a developer comes in and wants to subdivide the project, which we're unfortunately seeing now another mobile home park in Thousand Oaks is facing another potential of being developed into something else and residents having to move out. It is a source of affordable housing that you can't find anywhere else in our city, so hopefully this will help strengthen the rights of the residents there. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. I, too, want to say to the people out here, too, that we are doing everything we can, and it sounds like we've also got people in this county that have some relationships with this person that's trying to put this thing here, so I think we're gonna hopefully work as hard as possible to prevail. I know on the economic side, it's great to have additional jobs and everything else, but there is a downside to what we have to deal with there, but, and I'm sure there's some other locations that probably could be much better suited than in Camarillo. So I think we all have signed on to supporting the effort, so that's good, yeah. Also, I had the privilege of going to and enrobbing, I know, along with our CEO, a couple new judges, it was, it was great to see that. It was interesting to listen to, some of those judges can be pretty funny, can't they? And they have some pretty interesting paths they couldn't all talk about, but it was great to see, and it's just great to see that we have a county that, you look at the quality of the judges, the type of people that do wanna administer justice in this county, and it was, it was great to see that. As we all know, we're dealing with a budget crisis. You heard the other day that we had a recommendation of almost a $10 billion increase in taxes in this state, which I believe is gonna be a devastation to the county itself, in the rest of the state, you know? Putting additional burdens on people during tough times is not the way to go, and I hate to see that happen. We already see the Freddie Mac, you know, the Freddie Mae, and we saw Indy Bank, we saw a lot of other troubles going on. We don't need to add additional burdens. Somebody asked me from the L.A. Times, "Do you think that adding tax increases to people making more than $150,000 or whatever drives people out of the state?" I just, I look at that as just, you know, they're just burdens. We saw when workers' burdens got high, we saw businesses leave. And the worst problem about having the wealthy leave, a lot of their businesses leave with them, and that's not the thing we wanna see happen here. We've gotta find some additional ways to control our spending, control what we do, so that we don't end up with situations where teachers are in trouble and schools are in trouble, but there is additional ways to find effective ways to do, cost-effective ways in government. I know our own CEO's working on it in our own government here, and it's important. So I think that's, that's gonna be great. I do wanna adjourn in memory of the people on this list and let people know that I may not make next week's meeting, I'll be having some knee surgery, or a couple knee surgeries, so I may be out. All right? All right. I'm having some knee replacements, both of them, yeah.
At the same time.
At the same time. Go out in for punishment.
Wanna play basketball?
Yeah. That's what I'm hoping for, to get back to it. So anyway, I will be doing that. All right, let's move on to our, oh, you know what? Let me just say one other thing. I wanna agree with the other two supervisors in regards to this finance, campaign finance issue. This is, this is a very interesting situation here, and I, Mr. Osborne, and he was involved in my campaign in regards to some stuff they did, and I don't wanna make this a political issue, but what I do wanna make sure is that we do have the ability to relook at this thing in a way that does not put the public and the citizens of this county at risk in the sense that the system is set up, that the, you know, the county's paying for things that people feel they have to defend themselves, that come to a point that costs them an awful lot of money and a lot of problems. I know myself, being involved with some of that, you wonder about where we're going and what we're doing with that stuff. We have to find a system that is effective, that everybody believes, not just feels, but believes that it's true, that we wanna find a balance in this, and we don't wanna also run down a path where we have attorneys spending 20,000 or 30,000 of taxpayer dollars for things that our DA said, "Hey, there's nothing here," and we don't wanna do that. We wanna, we wanna find a balance that this thing works and it's effective, and I think that's important, and I know that they've all made a commitment on this board to relook at this whole thing, to do this, so that we don't run into problems where it doesn't matter what party it is or what person it is, believes that they're under the gun and they've gotta spend this kinda money to defend themselves. So anyway, I wanna make those comments. All right. Besides that, let's move on before our 10 o'clock time certance, and we will move to our regular agenda, our healthcare agency.
Good morning, Chair Foye, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. The item before you is request for ratification and approval of three contracts with BCNC physicians. The first is with Dr. Michael Lager, a cardiologist. The second is with Dr. Tamir Keshin, a pediatric general surgeon, and the third is with our faculty medical group, which is the core group of physicians that provide the faculty services at our family medicine residency. The board letter details the terms of the contracts, and the contracts are attached, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have one question here. On page two of the board letter, down at the bottom, it says, regarding Dr. Lager in that middle paragraph, you're referring, the last two sentences says, "In order to fairly compensate Dr. Lager, we recommend decreasing the level at which he begins to earn RBU-related income. His contract value will not increase and it compares favorably." I'm aware of what the RBU, that's that sort of incentive program that measures the doctor's productivity.
Sure.
How is it that we're able to lower that and not increase the contract cost?
What we do is, when we enter into a, this, Dr. Lager's a relatively new contract for us, and at the time we enter into the contract, we estimate, make an estimation of the work he'll be able to do, given the way we structure his work environment, the different clinical patients he goes to, the types of work he's doing, and the amount of work we think he'll be doing in addition to the amount of teaching he's doing. We create kind of an estimate of the overall work he'll be doing, and then determine how to incentivize him to do a little bit more. And oftentimes, our initial estimates change, and we have to either increase or decrease the threshold at which the doctor will begin earning those RVUs at a maximum, at which point we will stop paying for those RVUs. And we, we adjust the floor and the ceiling, so to speak, of those thresholds in concert with the overall value of the contract that we're trying to maintain. We don't ever wanna have a situation where we incentivize a doctor to earn too much beyond the value that we think is a reasonable and fair salary for a physician. We also don't wanna make the RBU bonus too easy to achieve, we don't wanna make it impossible to achieve, so it's a complicated process of figuring out where to set those numbers. The overall bonus portion is, in a sense, a subset of the overall value of the contract. So we determine what the overall dollar value of the contract should be, and then separate out a portion that we think is a dollar figure that would be fair for the doctor to earn if he or she reaches a particular productivity level. I know that's a confusing.
No, that's not confusing at all. What do you do when they, when they max out then at the end of their contract of the RUV?
Generally, generally, the doctors know going into the contract that that's a risk. Hopefully, we both, the doctor and we have done through the negotiation process, set that point at the perfect level, whereas they just reached that RBU level at the end of their contract year. Sometimes we aim a little low, and they'll exceed it, sometimes we aim a little high and they don't quite get there. It's part of the negotiation process. We've been very successful, I think, in using historical RVUs to determine where that level should be. We have RVU levels going back several years and use those to determine where we think the level should be.
Thank you. I'd like to just make this other.
I'd like to just make this other comment. I think if we look at what's been happening lately, we're attracting a higher and higher quality of physician here and I think that's a compliment to the team in terms of the recruiting. I think once it snowballs also, when you get some good doctors, you get more good doctors. And I think that the mess that the insurance industry is in probably is also helping us in that some doctors throw their hands up and want to come to work for the county where they don't have to deal with all of that. So let's take advantage of that and grab all, you know, the best we can because that will certainly snowball for us in terms of other physicians coming. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the recommended actions.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Here for the next one as well.
Yeah.
Good morning again. This item is a request for ratification and approval of three contracts with physicians providing services in our inpatient psychiatric unit. The first is with Dr. Carla Carroll, who will be going from part-time to full-time work with us. The second is with a Dr. Beatty, who's a new full-time physician for us. And the third is a contract with Dr. Rosaya, who will be increasing his hours of service to us. These contracts will allow us to decrease the dollars we're spending on very expensive locums coverage. If I have any answer, any questions about them in particular?
So it looks like here, is this Lindy Care Healthcare?
Correct.
That's good. You're making it up by reducing that and?
By both Lindy Care and MDA, we're reducing both of those contracts. We'll spend less on locums and have full-time coverage of our own doctors. It's not only a financial win, but from a service perspective.
It's better service for their patients?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good. Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Supervisor Park. What was that? Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see her vote show up on there. Oh, it did? It popped in late. Okay. I didn't know you could pop them and have them come in late. She's always trying to make an entrance, isn't she? Uh-oh. I lost my computer here.
It's right here.
Well, I didn't do that one. Whatever's on it just, just went black on me. We may take a break for about three minutes or five minutes of computer time. All right? Thank you. We'll take a break.
We'll come back to order and we'll move to item number 28 with our assessor's office.
Good morning Chairman Foy, members of the board, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Cohen, and Mr. Kriebon. Item number 28 is to amend the 26-year-old ordinance on calamity claims to comply with state law. Today is the first of two hearings with a second hearing to be held next Tuesday, July 22nd. Upon your board's adoption, the amendment will increase the damage threshold to qualify for relief, extend the filing periods for both the claim as well as for the appeal. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Do you have any questions, comments?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you.
Title of the ordinance. An amendment to Ventura County Ordinance Number 3606 relating to the provision for reassessment of property damaged or destroyed by misfortune or calamity.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. We'll move to 29. Mr. McColl.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. Our request to you is with regards to establishing new classifications in the Fire District. These are two man years that already exists, two functions that are already being performed, but they were being done under the title of the Sheriff's Communication and Sheriff's Information. When we created the original classifications for department-based outpost for both communications and for computer operations, it was done using the title from the sheriff until such time as we can go back, rewrite the classifications at the same pay rate and make it specifically applicable to the specific department. In this case, it's Fire District Communications and Fire District Information Manager.
Okay, do you have any questions or any? No?
Who's your recommended action?
Okay. She just wants to sneak in later again. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Thanks very much.
Number 30 Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. This is a request that the board override the Traffic Division regarding a request by the Oak Park MAC and residents in Oak Park to have a four-way stop at the intersection of North Oaks Hills Drive and Medea Creek Lane. There's a lot of traffic along this road, particularly high school students because there's a high school right there. And we're seeing the speeds of, I guess the county went out and surveyed and found the average speed of the 85th percentile is about 39 miles per hour. And if you look in your packet, there's a page that shows a map that this intersection is right at a bend also. So it's a little bit not only windy and a turn there, you end up with some high speeds. We've done this a couple of times in the last couple of years in terms of overriding to put in a four-way stop, one at Deer Hill and Deer Brook Roads, and that's right adjacent to a park, and another one at Rockfield and North Huskanye Drive. In this particular case, not only did the Oak Park MAC vote unanimously for this and request that I bring it to you, I also wanted to check with the residents in the area, so I sent a letter out. And everyone who responded came back saying absolutely we need it because the last thing I wanted to have was a bunch of residents upset that now they have to stop on their way home and to work and all. But this is something that has been unanimously agreed to by everyone in Oak Park that has commented. So I would ask that the board go ahead and follow the recommendation of the Oak Park MAC and approve multi-way stop at Oak Park, in Oak Park at North Oaks Hills Drive and Medea Creek Lane.
I'll second the motion. I do have a question for the CEO. And how many of these unwarranted stop signs have we approved?
We asked that question recently of the Roads Department. We think it's about 15, not counting the four signals. Is that right, question?
Okay, so it's certainly not the first time that we've done this.
Can I ask, what's your question? You can join me and get a knee if that's bothering. Okay, when we, when the recommendation comes, for some reason this wasn't recommended. I'm trying to understand because I've read back what some of the numbers here. It says accidents, but this is accident information 97 to 99. I guess that's a couple of years old, about 10 years old. Do we have, what's, then somebody on my staff gave me a piece of paper. It says we have no accidents in five years. Is that why we don't recommend because there's been no accidents?
Yes, sir. Somebody, an individual from your staff called and asked if we would look at the accident record. We went back and looked at Switters for the last five years, and there are no accidents at this intersection.
And is that why there's no recommendation? Because there's no accident?
That was one of the reasons. The low traffic volumes on the side streets is the other.
Oh, it is? Okay. Now, I have a little insight on some of this stuff, probably different than some, because I got some highway patrol experience that works with me. It gives me a little bit. Because I, one of the concerns, I guess, that the highway patrol has when we do these, and I don't know where these other 15 have been, but I know when we did some in Santa Rosa Road, we had additional accidents that happened. We put some lights in or something. Is that, is that true?
We haven't had any additional accidents yet due to the lights because they haven't been installed.
Well, not the lights, but I guess some stop signs or something. Because I know one of the guys that runs the, the scales and everything for the area, a guy named Monday said he got in an accident sitting there waiting on a new, a new stop sign or something. Where did we have something that was on Santa Rosa Road that went in?
We don't have any stop signs on Santa Rosa Road that I'm aware of right now.
Okay, well, maybe it was something else. But I was just curious because they were talking about additional accidents that happen on large open roads by putting stop signs. I'm just curious, I know the residents may think the speed is fast, and I'm just wondering why we have no accidents. They may be thinking that we're going to put, there's kids at risk like Supervisor Park said, which may be a way to protect kids. But are we, are we offering an avenue that there's going to be more fender benders, there's going to be more big accidents or anything else that could happen when there's a stop sign there, people don't stop?
Statistically, as reported by the Traffic Engineers Associations, putting in non-warranted stop signs tends to result in a larger number of rear-end accidents. The number of accidents does increase. Whether there are accidents that would have occurred anyway or not, it's hard to, hard to predict. But statistically, it does increase the number of accidents. It increases the potential of what we call T-bone accidents where somebody does blow the stop sign. If, if they perceive that the stop sign is not really needed, they continually stop there and there's no one at the stop, at the side streets. There is a tendency on the part of some, some motorists to blow stop signs where they don't contingently see side street traffic.
Okay. So, so I guess the fender benders are people stopping at the stop sign and people not knowing that their stop sign is going to be there particularly, and they're, they're running into those people. What about the ones who run through a stop sign? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is if, what she just said something that really concerned me, if there are a lot of high school kids there, if people aren't going to stop and kids think we're, you know, a lot of people think that there's stop signs so I can cut across the crosswalk, and if people are running, do we put people at greater risk that way? I don't want to, I want you to use statistics. I don't want to use your opinion if you can.
Yeah, I don't know about the word risk, but typically when you, you know, when you study a location for a multi-way stop, you try to get locations, one of the criteria is locations where the, where the side street and the primary street volumes, they won't be equal, but they should be close to, a little bit closer to each other. If you have a side street volume which is very, very small compared to your primary street, people coming through the primary street stopping, well, after a while, I mean, they're human beings, they'll say, hey, there's no need for a stop sign here. And the next time they go through, they will roll through. And then maybe the time after that, when it's late at night and there's not, they don't figure there's any traffic, they'll just blow it. And, and that's just a perception, you know, that's not a perception, that's a, you know, recorded observation. But whether or not, we have, we have put in non-warranted stop signs throughout other locations in the county, and we haven't had that type of problem reported or encountered in the last 15, 16 years.
We, we have had, is what you said?
We have had non-warranted stop signs, and we have not had that type.
Oh, okay, we have not had.
Problem reported or encountered in the last 15 to 16 years, so.
Okay.
We don't recommend them, but again, we, we.
Because it's, because it's not in economics. I mean, it sounds like Supervisor Park's letter, it's very inexpensive. It's not like it's $1,000.
No, it's not economic. But also, the two that have been put in in the last couple of years, there hasn't been a noted concern in terms of rear-enders.
Right.
On that either. And I just would also note that just a, I think, three blocks away short residential block is 25 mile per hour sign because it's a school there.
Yeah. What is the other side that we have? Do we have any additional liability by doing something that's, well, I probably shouldn't ask you. I probably stole, do we have?
I would defer to County Council.
Do we, do we have liability by putting something, like I said, I don't know if I've, since we've, I've been here, we put in a non-warranted, do we have liability? Does that?
Well, it's conceivable that the county might be sued for creating a dangerous condition of public property as a result of putting in a non-warranted stop sign. But as Mr. Britt has noted, we haven't had that kind of problem in the past. And with board approval ordinarily, we would be able to raise the defense of design immunity to such a lawsuit.
Wow, okay. Guess that's my question. I just, I don't know, I just have a hard time with putting these things in. Can I ask you Supervisor Park, the MACs, reasons for doing it, they just thought the traffic was going fast, or is that what it was, or?
They've been studying this for a couple of years, getting a lot of complaints. And over two years' worth of review and comments and complaints from residents have brought, brought it to a vote. And after they received a report from Mr. Britt, they made that vote. So I, I think it's certainly something that the people who live there, I feel, know what they need. And I strongly support this, and I know the MAC does, as well as all the residents around, you know. I think that, that adds to it. So having had the, the very good success we have with the other two, I have really no concerns on this.
Is there any other comment that you can make? I don't, like I said, I'm just trying to get an understanding of us putting things in that the department doesn't recommend and...
I think that's really a decision of the board.
Yeah, I understand.
We have, we have given the recommendation that we're required to give to you, to the MAC. The MAC didn't like our recommendation, and so they basically appealed it to your, to your board.
I was asking, what would have made the difference that you would have recommended?
Well, there are, there are very strict warrants or requirements as laid out in the traffic manual, the current traffic manual as adopted by the State of California. This intersection and the other intersection we were asked to study did not come close to meeting those warrants. We, we tend to stick very closely to the warrants when we make our recommendations for reasons of staying within the issues of liability and for reasons of staying within what statistically is the recommended practice of the traffic engineers around the country. And that's our, you know, our position was that we did not recommend multi-way stops or reduction of the speed limit on this street because they were both within the current guidelines or the current criteria that's established by the state for that, for that type of thing.
I think the last ones we did were in Peru Supervisor Long brought forward.
There were three, two or three non-warranted stop signs put in out of Peru.
Three.
Been about a year ago now.
I'm seeing singles back there, five, three.
Or three, three put in, I think they were about five years ago.
Oh, five years ago, three, five years ago. Because I don't remember. All right, I, you have another comment on?
No, I'd like your support. If I don't have it, I'll ask that we continue.
You would?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just, I'll be honest, personally, I just can't, I just, I don't like to add things that we don't need to do. I know it's some people, because I got people, we need this and we need that, and experts, because it becomes an emotional opinion and I, because you didn't even ask to reduce the speed limit, did you?
We did not recommend a reduction.
That's, I mean, I mean, there wasn't even a speed limit reduction. So it's, I guess I'm just wondering, is the idea is I just like a stop sign, so I best stop and come?
You know, you can't reduce the speed and have it enforced. That's the issue. I mean, there are plenty of areas where cities and others would like to reduce the speed, but then the tickets aren't held up in court.
Yeah.
Because the court can't do it because it's considered a speed trap if it's not the 85th percentile of speed. So that was certainly a consideration here also. And residents are finding this a dangerous intersection, and they want to do something about it. And we've done this, you know, over a dozen times in the county. But if, if you have those concerns, I'll go ahead and move continuance into our next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe you can ask some support.
Withdraw, well, that would be my motion to continue us to our next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to?
Continue.
Could, could continue.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, then we're going to move on to 31.
Okay, 31 is also one that I brought forward. And this is a, a concept to put forward a design competition to re-landscape some of the turf areas around the government center in drought-resistant vegetation. And to do this primarily for public education and as a water conservation project. Actually, our water for watering the turf around the government center is done through well water, so that, we're fortunate to have that source. However, I see, you know, in this day and age, and we really need to conserve every drop of water we can with California's drought and the governor calling it a drought, that we can help the public by providing some areas around the government center with examples of drought-resistant landscaping. And I see as, opening it up as a competition with landscapers, landscape architects, maybe the California Native Plant Society, master gardeners. There's a lot of different organizations out there, some water agencies I know have already done this. Our Resource Conservation District has done a demonstration garden too, as well as maybe including the county colleges and universities. Open it up as a, a competition to submit designs for landscaping that would use less water and maybe even ziriscape and not need water and also low maintenance. Some category examples that I mentioned in my letter for drought-resistant landscaping, you know, the ziriscaping. Fire-resistant landscaping is something our fire department has been looking at doing a pilot project on, and maybe would want to participate in this also. I also have heard that Watershed Protection District is looking at potentially doing some kind of demonstration too, maybe using biofilters. We could have competitions in terms of native color or habitat for birds, butterflies, water conservation cistern, other technology, succulents, maybe one for fragrance. But the, the whole concept would be to have it be drought-resistant, looking at natural fertilizers or pesticides, not using pesticides and herbicides as possible. So I think we have a, a good opportunity. We certainly have the landscape for it now that we could use. And right now, what I'm looking at to get this ball going is to ask our General Services Agency to design this competition and bring it back to the boards. And we can then look at what they've come up with and to work in conjunction with our CEO's office to do that. Because it may involve other agencies, is what I'm hearing there, are other departments in the county that may want to get involved in this also. So that, if, if that is specific enough, that would be my motion to, to go forward and work, have the CEO's office work with the GSA department to develop the design competition for putting together a low water, drought-resistant landscaping on some of the turf areas around the government center.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments on this issue. One, I don't want to confuse another topic with this, so I'm not going to make this as part of the motion, but I do want to get on the radar screen. With our new water, regional water quality control requirements coming in, we will have other issues with this site that we're going to have to deal with. And that's, you know, what are we going to do with rainwater off of the parking lots? And ultimately, that may, may be something that dovetails into what are we going to do with all of this grass that, that we have here, et cetera. So I just want to get that on the radar screen. There's also the issue of if we ever at some point in time down the road do solar panels over the parking lot. So those are big issues that don't, that I don't, again, want to confuse this motion with, but while we're talking about this facility, I want to, wanted to get on the radar screen. And I'd certainly be supportive of the motion. I'd just like to add, I think it's, I just want to be clear. I think the intention is for GSA to work with the CEO to design this competition with the, with the proviso that it's practical, doable, within reason, that, you know, that you look at the resources that you have and you go, this is something that we can do. Okay? And so that's, I think it's important that we, we send that message, you know, look at the resources and what is something that's just common sense, practical, gets us started with this. So if, if you're willing to add that as part of your motion, I think that...
Absolutely. I would want it doable. And then also looking at some financing availability. Well, I think that there would probably be some good sponsorships available. I'd be glad to assist with that too. There may already be some grants available for doing some of this too. So that's why I made it broad enough that if they want to go for grant funding, that, that's something that the board would support also. And, you know, maybe start off with a handful of plots that they can do, maybe five, you know, just to see what's out there. We might end up with so many, so many organizations wanting to compete and having some good designs. We could widen that. But I, I see this as a good start, and I really like the direction you're going to with the idea that eventually we're going to have to look at this site with the, in terms of trying to clean up our stormwater runoff. And parking lots are a huge source of that. So that's good later down the line. But this is looking at more of a demonstration projects for demonstration gardens for drought resistance.
So I second the motion with that, with that additional proviso in there in terms of practicality and confidence.
Do you have to redefine your motion?
Mm-hmm, yes, that if you doable.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second? Hello? No. How's it going, Mark? Huh?
Two yeses and one no.
Two yeses, one no. Okay. You have Supervisor Long's item?
May I ask a question from Mr. Kriebon? Can I do a vote to reconsider?
I don't believe so because you have to be on the prevailing side, and your side didn't prevail.
Okay, 32?
32, yes. Excuse me Supervisor Long couldn't be. Her staff is in the audience. She's been working with the cemetery districts to try to revitalize the Board of Directors. The Barstail Cemetery District has requested consideration for expansion of their board from three to five members, and that's the item you have before you today. Basically to set up a public hearing and to give notice in accordance with Health and Safety Code. If you have any questions, staff is here to answer.
Do you have any questions?
Second, the motion.
She, we already have a motion, yes.
Do you want to finish these?
Yeah, let's see if we can run through these real quick. And 33 is my item to hold a, a meeting in Moorpark. We've, I think we've been getting a lot of positive feedback in the communities throughout the county. We hold these meetings offsite, so I'd like to recommend that our October 28th meeting be held at the Moorpark City Hall. We haven't held, we have not held a meeting in Moorpark before. The estimated financial impact's about $300. That amount has, has been about the average cost of offsite meeting. And if there's any changes in that amount, after the clerk of the board meets with the city representative, we'll return to the board for approval.
It doesn't say here, but I assume you mean this is an evening meeting?
An evening meeting, yes.
Okay.
So make that motion.
Second.
Oh, did I? Sorry about that. And then we have redevelopment? Good morning.
Members of the board, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. Before you today is a request for adoption of the budget for the coming year for the redevelopment agency. Along with the budget is a report of activities for last year and a work plan for the coming year. Because time is short, I'll keep it short myself, which I love to do. Just the bottom line, so that you know, it's not a very big budget, but it is a sound budget. We're within our means, and we've got a contingency reserve of 15% in our debt service. So, I mean, we've got some plans for next year. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Have a motion? Have a second? And then we'll, correspondence file? Prove of that?
Second.
Second. Second. Okay. Boy, I'll tell you, we're sleeping here today. Is that it? What you got? Okay. Then we'll move on back to our ten o'clock time certain, we're a little late, but we have our, um, number seventeen, which I'll be presenting, um, which is our Probation and Parole Officers Week. Got some people here, so good. This year, we're celebrating the centennial year of the establishment of Ventura County Probation Agency. The, these line officers are the heart of the probation and patrol profession, where they are on the streets supervising offenders day and, day and night, working to ensure our safe community, and you know what, I want everybody to know that we do appreciate that, we really do. This is a community that, uh, I was back in Pennsylvania, matter of fact, for family reunion over the Fourth of July, and talking about how safe our community was, and we know there's some safe communities back there, and somebody said, you know, I heard that you guys have it pretty safe back there, and I thought it was pretty interesting that people know how much, people do a good job and do care about what goes on in this community, and I just do appreciate that. So, um, Karen, we'll let you speak, and I'll come down and present, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Floyd, Boyd, Members, Mrs. Robinson, thank you so much for acknowledging, uh, Probation and Parole Week. As you know, um, I'm accepting this on behalf of all the men and women of our agency, they do an outstanding job, um, to help keep our communities, uh, safe. Uh, as, as the resolution talks about, we supervise of almost twenty thousand, uh, people on probation, adults and juveniles, and work with another additional ten thousand juveniles, um, in our youth services and early intervention programs. And through, through our efforts, and not really through our efforts, but through the men and women of, of the agency, through their efforts, um, I think we do a really wonderful job of providing, um, really, um, best practice kinds of programings for the people here in our community, and hopefully, um, help some of them get back on the straight and narrow. So I appreciate the board's support, I appreciate the CEO's support, and I just want to thank you on behalf of the agency for, for this resolution this morning, thank you.
Karen Wood. While you're here, could you introduce your chiefs?
I'd love to introduce my chief deputies. This morning, I have, um, my three chief deputies with me, Joan Splitter, who's in charge of my administrative services, Mark Varela, who's in charge of probation services, and Alan Hammeran in charge of my institutions, and then I also have some division managers here, Pat Neal, and Patricia Oliveras, and a variety of supervisors who came, uh, today to, uh, in support, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, come on. You guys all want one? Oh, come on.
Oh, come on, you can't be that shy. I, I've been at meetings with these people. They're not shy, come on down.
All right, let's move on to number eighteen, sir.
Uh, thank you very much, um, it's a real pleasure for me to introduce, uh, um, a good old friend of mine, uh, Mr. Bob Gien, uh, who's on the Ventura County Fair Board, and he's here to do our annual, uh, do their annual presentation of the fair poster to the citizens of Ventura County, and I'm anxious to see what we got. Welcome, Bob.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Chair, Board Members, and Marty, congratulations. I've known Marty for quite a few years, we built that, got Veterans Memorial there in the corner, so...
We, we hired her in spite of her friendship.
She was very good, her and Susan. Anyway, this year's, uh, poster, I'm very proud of, I think it's, it's all the years I've been there, I think this is the, the second best, or maybe the first, but it was done by a local, uh, local, uh, resident who lives in Ojai, Steve Mitchell. He took a picture of his daughter on Kitty Land First Will, and then he started painting seven years ago, and he put it on oil, so, really nice, it shows the Midway, the ocean, the island, so with that allure, I'd like to present it to you.
Wow, that's neat, huh? That looks...
A little prouder, but it's all Ventura County, it's Ventura County Fair.
Tremendous. It's amazing how creative people can be.
Uh, thank you for letting me to come, and, uh, our theme this year is meet me at the fair, so I'll see you all there.
Thank you very much, sir, great, great poster. You don't want to talk about rates or anything, do you, sir? You know, I'm not sure the public's liking you much anymore. Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Mrs. Robinson, Reddy Pacala with Public Works Agency, Water and Sanitation Department. Uh, this is a public hearing for the proposed sewer rate increase for County Service Area Number Twenty-nine. As your Board is aware, CSA Number Twenty-nine provides sanitation services to the communities of, uh, Solomar Beach, Huria Beach, Masu Shoals, and Sea Cliff. Uh, now, these, these are north of City of Ventura, as you're aware. North Coast Sewer System is a step system, it's a unique system where we have underground tank and a pump for the great majority of the parcels, and we pump sewage from this system into the City of Ventura Sewer System for treatment and disposal. At this time, Ventura Regional Sanitation District operates and maintains this sewer system for us. Uh, to offset increased costs of energy and increased costs of, uh, sewer service charges from City of Ventura, and also increased operational maintenance costs from Ventura Regional Sanitation District, we are recommending a five percent sewer rate increase for all of the customers in this service area. To comply with the requirements of Proposition Two Eighteen, on May twenty-eighth, two thousand eight, we mailed notices of the proposed sewer rate increase to all of our customers in the service area. Our clerk of the board did not receive any protest letters, our office did not receive any telephone calls about this proposed rate increase. We are recommending that your Board adopt the resolution to increase the sewer service charges, and also to collect these charges as part of the annual general county tax roll. This concludes my verbal presentation, I'll be glad to take any questions you might have, thank you.
Is, uh, accepting that as the tax rule, is that any different than we do before, is that what we always do now?
I believe this is a standard procedure for this one.
Oh, standard, okay. Do you have any other questions or comments?
This is, uh...
I believe you have a card.
Do we have a card?
Or comment card?
Yeah, I don't see a card.
Sewer service in, um, in my district, uh, I think the residents have been very happy with it, it's very unusual and tricky, uh, sewer setup, but it's certainly far better than the discharge and decepting tanks right there at the beach. Um, and, uh, I think they're going to face consistent, every year, annual increases in that sewer charge because of the pumping cost and the energy involved, uh, so I think they find it very reasonable, and I think they feel like, uh, this has been managed well, so I'd move the recommended action.
So you can, you can say those, you can ask for those charges with a smile on your face then, can't you?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I think that, uh... Thank you, sir, appreciate that. I think that finalizes our regular agenda, and all we have is our, um, closed session. We have anything coming out of closed session?
I believe there will be an announcement.
There will be an announcement out of closed session, okay, then, uh, if we do have an announcement, we'll adjourn from there, okay. All right, we have an announcement out of closed session, County Council?
Thank you. Concerning item twenty-one on the agenda, in the case of the County of Ventura versus Ventura County Community College District, Ventura County Superior Court Case Number Fifty-six dash two thousand eight dash zero zero three one four zero eight six dash CU dash WM dash VTA. The Board of Supervisors has, by a vote of three to zero, approved a settlement consisting of full payment of the county's claim. The college district will pay the county the sum of three hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred twelve dollars and thirty cents, in exchange for the county's dismissal of its lawsuit claiming traffic impact mitigation fees under the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll go back to closed session, and there'll be no other announcements, I will close, and closed session, adjourn in closed session.